The following program is made possible by First State Bank. Offering secure online and mobile banking. First State Bank is ready to serve your financial needs with locations in Warren, Hermitage, and Hampton. First State Bank. The difference is leadership. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
We received at the agenda meeting the amended to add under Dave Fire Committee, the volunteer of Sam Stone.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the agenda?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, bow down. Show of hands. Unanimous. Okay. Thank you. Now I need a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
I move that the minutes for July 12th be approved as female members.
Motion in second to approve the minutes from July 12th meeting. All those in favor, bow of hands. Unanimous. And now we will go to the city's first report. Revenue received, you take one million eight hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and eighty-one cents. Expenses were two million twenty-five thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. Revenue illustrated was two thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-six cents. Expenses, two hundred eighty-six thousand three thirty-three oh two. Revenue law enforcement, sixty-three thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. Expenses, eight hundred ten thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. Revenue in the fire department, seventeen thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars and nine cents. Expenses, one hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy-four cents. Sanitation revenue, four hundred eighteen thousand one hundred eight dollars and fifty-two cents. Expenses, four hundred forty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Building cost revenue, eleven thousand four hundred three dollars and sixty-six cents. Expenses, thirteen thousand one hundred three dollars and ninety-six cents. Vehicle revenue, seventy-four thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Expenses were fifty-three thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars and four cents. Expenses for municipal building, fourteen thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. Recreation revenue, one thousand one hundred seventy dollars and five cents. Expenses, one hundred six thousand twenty-six dollars and ten cents. Cost of center revenue, six thousand twenty-seven dollars and four cents. Expenses, seven thousand three hundred forty-four dollars and ninety-eight. Home and neighbor's center revenue, three thousand seven hundred eighty dollars. Expenses were three thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. Shooting range revenue, thirteen thousand two hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Expenses were fifty-six thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. Expenses for the senior citizen center was two thousand five hundred sixty dollars and seventy-five cents. Revenue dollars was twenty-eight hundred dollars and expenses were three thousand five dollars and fifty cents. Airport revenue, two thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. Expenses, fourteen thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-one cents. Economic development expenses, five thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty-six Revenue in the street department was three hundred thirty, three hundred sixty-six thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Expenses were two hundred forty-eight dollars eight hundred ninety-one dollars, ninety-four dollars and twenty-one.
I move that we approve the financial statement after the Senate's first.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the financial statement. Any discussion? All those in favor, bow of hands. Unanimous. You should have a July cash balances report. In the city sales news stack for the month of July, we will see eighty-three thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and eleven cents. For year-to-date total, fifty-five thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and twenty-four cents. We oversaw about five percent from the same time last year. In the county sales, we received fifty-eight thousand one hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. For year-to-date total, four hundred eighty-eight thousand one hundred twelve dollars and thirty-nine cents. Those tax are about eight percent the same time last year. And you should have copies of the bright county just for 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 for. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. We'll start tonight with a resolution to honor Mr. N.P. Matts Mather. Ms. Ladonna, if you would, if you're comfortable standing where you are, normally we come up here. If you want to do that, we welcome you. We'll mask up so we can all stand out here with her. Ms. Henderson, you are the one that made the motion. Would you like to just stand where you are?
Okay. This is a resolution number A six six zero. We need a motion to. Okay. A resolution honoring N.P. Matts Mather. Whereas, N.P. Matts was loved by many and a valued citizen of Warren, Arkansas. And whereas, N.P. Mather, also known as Matts, was a wonderful and loving father to the daughter of his heart, Angie Forkway. He cherished his wife of forty-eight years, Ladonna Martindale Mather. And whereas, Matts came to the United States in nineteen sixty-three, where he pursued his education at the prestigious University of Tennessee School of Industrial Engineering. And whereas, after his education, Matts became plant manager for Jack Winner of Warren, Arkansas. And whereas, Matts was an active and faithful member of the Emmanuel Baptist Church. He was a devoted Christian man who loved the Lord. He believed in being an example to others as well as teaching the Bible. And whereas, Matts loved reading books about John F. Kennedy as well as other books regarding the USA as a growing superpower in its scientific advancement. And whereas, Matts was an advocate for the city of Warren after he became plant manager at Jack Winner's. For several years, he started his own clothing manufacturing business named after his beloved wife, Ladonna. It was called Ladonna Sportswear. And whereas, Matts will be sorely missed by all. Now be it resolved by the city of Warren that N.P. Matts Mather is hereby honored for his lifelong devotion to his family and fellow citizens.
I move that we adopt resolution number A six six zero.
Second.
As a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, bow of hands. Okay, we will get this signed and then we'll give you a more official copy.
Okay.
If you want this.
Thank you so much.
Yes, you may.
I just want to say that it has just been a pleasure serving as your alderman and Mr. Matts. And he will certainly be missed and we certainly appreciate everything that he did, the contributions made to Warren. We recognize the fact that when he was at Jack Winner and Ladonna, he utilized employment security. He always utilized.
He did, Dorothy. I remember those conversations.
And he would have prayer and present roses to his ladies that worked there. He was a very, very dear man and we're very blessed to have had him.
Yes, thank you so much for our community and for our wonderful family, too. I appreciate it so much.
Thank you, Ladonna.
Yes, thank you. Bye-bye.
Allow me just a minute. Okay, now we have the ordinance, amendment to ordinance, or ordinance number nine thirty-six on the agenda.
I move that we place ordinance number nine thirty-six on its first reading.
Ordinance number nine thirty. I'm sorry, second.
Second.
Yeah, Marshall. And it's motion to place ordinance number nine thirty-six on its first reading. Is there any discussion? A show of hands, please. Okay. All right. Now, ordinance number nine thirty-six, an ordinance to amend ordinance number seven eighty-four, requiring premises to be kept free from weeds, rank grass, garbage, rubbish, and other unsightly and unsanitary articles, requiring property owners to eliminate, fill up, or remove stagnant pools of water, or any other unsanitary thing, place, or condition which might become a breeding place for mosquitoes, flies, and germs harmful to the health of the community, prescribing a procedure to be followed in such cases. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Warren, Arkansas, Section One. All property owners within the city of Warren, Arkansas are hereby required to cut weeds and grass, remove garbage, rubbish, litter, inoperable vehicles, and other unsanitary and unsightly articles and things from their property, and to eliminate, fill up, or remove stagnant pools of water, or any other unsanitary thing, place, or condition which might become a breeding place for mosquitoes, flies, and germs harmful to the health of the community. Weeds and grass shall be deemed to violate this ordinance when allowed to grow to a height of ten inches. Inoperable vehicles are those defined in ordinance number seven eighty-three. Section Two, if the owner or owners of any lot or other real property within the city of Warren, after the giving of twenty days' notice in writing by the building official, shall refuse or neglect to perform the duties in connection with this or their property as specified in Section One thereof. The City Council is hereby authorized to order its designated employees or agents to enter upon the property and have said weeds, rank grass, or other vegetation cut and removed, or eliminated, or eliminate any unsanitary and unsightly condition, and the cost thereof shall be charged against said premises and shall constitute a lien thereon. In addition to notice in writing, the building officials shall cause to be posted in a conspicuous place on the property a sign specifying the work to be done and stating the deadline for compliance. Prior to ordering the property cleaned up, the council may commence an action in the district court seeking a judgment that the property owner or owners are in violation of the ordinance. If judgment is entered in favor of the city of Warren, a fine shall be levied as provided in Section Four. The levying of a fine shall not prohibit the city from enforcing the lien provided for in Section Four. Section Three, in case the owner of any lot or other real property is unknown, or his whereabouts is not known, or is a non-resident of this state, then a copy of the written notice referred to in Section Two shall be posted upon the premises, and before any action to enforce this ordinance shall be had, the recorder shall make an affidavit setting out the facts as to the unknown address or whereabouts of non-residents, and whereupon service of publication as now provided for by law against non-resident defendants may be had. An attorney-at-litium shall be appointed notified the defendant by registered letter addressed to his last known place of residence, if same can be found. Section Four, the lien provided for in Section Two may be enforced at any time within eighteen months after work has been done by an action in the circuit court. Criminal penalties, any person violating any provision of this ordinance shall be deemed guilty of a misdemeanor, and upon conviction thereof shall be fined in an amount not less than twenty-five dollars nor more than two hundred and fifty dollars. Each day such violation is committed or permitted to continue shall constitute a separate offense and shall be punishable as such hereunder. Section Five, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number nine thirty-six on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion in second to place ordinance nine thirty-six on its second reading. All those in favor, bow of hands. Unanimous. Ordinance number nine thirty-six, an ordinance to amend ordinance number seven eighty-four, requiring premises to be kept free from weeds, rank grass, garbage, rubbish, and other unsightly and unsanitary articles, requiring property owners to eliminate, fill up, or remove stagnant pools of water, or any other unsanitary thing, place, or condition which might become a breeding place for mosquitoes, flies, and germs harmful to the health of the community, prescribing a procedure to be followed in such cases.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number nine thirty-six on its third and final reading.
Motion in second to place ordinance number nine thirty-six on its final reading. Ordinance number nine thirty-six. I'm sorry. All those in favor, bow of hands.
I have an unreadiness. On section number three, and it may not, our attorney's here so he can tell us, but I wouldn't want any technicalities to hit. When you look at section number three, and it says that first sentence, unknown, or his, should it not be their whereabouts? So that is not showing that if a female is the person that it excludes a woman? And when you go down to the last sentence where it says letter, address, to his, should it not be their last known place?
I'll defer to Mr. Claycomb on that one.
It shouldn't just be a matter of preference. You can do it either way. Normally, when they use a single gender, it's meant to represent people.
Either one, so it would not be a technicality if that was the case, if it was me that was being charged as being a woman, and it says his.
I shouldn't get a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll put a vote.
All those in favor, bow of hands. Unanimous. Ordinance number nine thirty-six, an ordinance to amend ordinance number seven eighty-four, requiring premises to be kept free from rank weeds, rank grass, garbage, and rubbish, and other unsightly and unsanitary articles, requiring property owners to eliminate, fill up, or remove stagnant pools of water, or any other unsanitary thing, place, or condition which might become a breeding place for mosquitoes, flies, and germs harmful to the health of the community, prescribing a procedure to be followed in such cases.
I move that we adopt ordinance number nine thirty-six.
Second. Motion in second to adopt ordinance number nine thirty-six. All those in favor, bow of hands. And it's unanimous. Does an alderman have any, would like, have anyone to be recognized? Had, did anyone sign in, Charlotte? Did we have no one sign? Okay.
Mayor, Janice Smith was going to try to be here, and I don't see her, so may I speak and share? Of course, the trailer is dealing with the trailer home that was actually sold, supposedly sold. Now, the complaint is, and I went by to personally see what she was referencing, trash is being put out, and cats are getting in it, and it's all over the ditch right next to where her home is. The trailer lot is not being cut, and Janice actually asked her if she could have it cut that one time, and she did. And now it has grown back up. And then I noticed that the sign off of the public hearing is still up, and I was just wondering if there was a reason for that. And when we look at this new ordinance, the issue that Janice is having falls within those categories, although it does say that I pointed out in section three, his, this is a she that, she is the homeowner that is renting with the option to buy. And you can go by and look, I mean, it is grown up, the trash has been there for probably three weeks, because I've gone by and just monitored to see if it was still there.
Okay, I will check with Mr. May tomorrow and find out if Ms. Smith has called in to make a complaint, and it doesn't matter if she has or not.
I have a question for Ms. Anderson. The person that's living there is rent to own?
That's what Janice says. Now, I'm not sure if I recall, if she told me she actually saw the paperwork, but she did, I do recall her saying that, the young lady said that she was renting, you know how you rent with the option to buy, to own?
So is this what we consider a contract sale?
Yes. Well, I guess that, I don't know.
Is this a heavenly property that we talked about years ago?
Yes, yes.
So if it is a contract sale, then that would be something that, you know, be on the book at the courthouse, too. It's supposed to be recorded.
It's all grown up and papers everywhere, but I was wondering why our sign was still there.
I will check in on that tomorrow. If there's been a lien for that on the circuit court.
The contract sale.
The contract should be recorded. That helps with the taxes. That contract's recorded, and they don't have to pay the taxes on the property. You know, they have the rights of a property owner.
Oh, really?
If the contract is recorded.
Okay. I thought they were supposed to move that anyway. Am I wrong? They were supposed to, and then I thought he was going to sell it. So that was my question there.
It's an easy way to get, that would be a quick way to get around it.
I know. That's something we need to check into and make sure, because it could still be rented, and then she's just.
Well, my understanding that it was, like you said, it was a contract sale that he was rent, you know, not rented, but he was selling it to her. And there was paperwork that she had, I know this, that she had to submit to Mr. May before he would allow the water and it could be turned off.
And she probably did everything that she knows to do, but with him being the owner, he needs to make sure that's recorded through the county.
Like I say, I visit with Mr. May.
Okay, I'm not comprehending, so would you say that one more time, as to how that works?
If you are on a contract to buy a piece of property, take that contract to the county clerk's office, they will record it, and then that puts, you're responsible for the taxes, and if you can get a home shed credit, you get the home shed credit.
Oh, okay. Okay. That makes it all legal, is what you're saying.
Yes, insurance part, ownership.
There's just so many steps you got to take.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Chief Hildreth, we're ready for your report, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You guys, once again, I have a copy of my monthly report in front of you. The only thing you might know is a little bit different from it. Normally, we don't have a copy of the vehicle maintenance specs for the vehicles. The officer that was in charge of getting that board had to leave the property on a medical situation, so that was kind of shorthanded on, so we didn't get a chance to get that in. But we will get this month and next month, and on the next month.
Can you estimate us, sir, how much that was?
High.
I looked inside, and I thought, okay, it wasn't here, and I thought, okay.
I can tell you that it's not as bad as it's been, but we have had a few expensive deals to come through. The reason why I can't estimate on it for you is because I don't know what deals have come into the mayor's office, I didn't sign off on things of that nature, it's going to kind of sporadically come down if the deals are repaired. But it's going to be about average. As a matter of fact, this month may be a little bit higher because we had some major work done on a few vehicles back in, it would have been back in June, that the vehicle we just now come back in on. But it's been about average for us. No, we haven't had many maintenance problems, because we have been having just little things, little bales and beans and things of that nature to kind of drive us up. In the mountains, we had the transmission problem, and I'm quite sure back in June, we had to get one to El Dorado, that was quite expensive, and that was, I believe, almost double fifty dollars to replace a transmission thing of that nature, but get the El Dorado. And that one I know came in on this month, on this month's report, so that's why I say high.
Okay, so next month, we'll get.
Yes, ma'am, we'll make sure you get your copy of this month's, and we'll come out tomorrow, and we'll highlight what month it was for. We're still on standby for the, for the vehicles. I did happen to see on the news the other day, the business report, that those chips that was, that we were told that was holding the vehicles up, have, they are starting to get back into manufacturing production. So hopefully, for long, we get some more vehicles on the lot that we can replace on the older vehicles that we do have.
Okay, and again, help me to understand why we're having such a hard time of getting them?
There's not, there's not any vehicle on the lots. There was not the, during the weekend.
Nowhere.
From anywhere, just.
It's a shortage.
Yes, it's a shortage.
Oh, okay.
And for explanation, we get from the dealer that we deal with, is that there was a lithium chip that was needed to run the computers for the vehicle, there was a shortage of, of lead, trading markers, or whatever, I took that issue with the, I did see on the news the other day that they did start back manufacturing, so that was the holdup as far as, it's not that we can't buy vehicles, there's no vehicles to buy.
Wow. I see some cities running around with new vehicles, so I guess they've had theaters ordered some.
They could have ordered them last, you know, we ordered one that kind of, which sold out, it wasn't, four paper marts or something of that nature, and so, they're ordering theirs that way, last year, down between the things of that nature. Now, if we could order more in the year that we would have been ahead of, because we did order them last year, that's what we kind of feel about.
Makes sense.
Is there anything, you have anything, Alderman, Fraser?
I don't.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our acting fire chief, Mr. Hayes.
All right, the Warren Fire Department, last month, we had fifteen calls, only one of which was toned out. It was a house fire, actually at Joe's house. Then we had a regular fire meeting, had twenty members present there. And then, at the meeting, we went over, we got, we were able to buy some thermal imagers, those linear imagers, and so we practiced with those, and got everybody familiar with that.
Explain a little bit more, because I found it very interesting when he was talking about wanting to purchase them, what they, what their capabilities are.
They detect heats and different, and differences in temperature, so it's basically a camera that you can scan a dark room, smoke-filled room, and it'll illuminate a body image or whatever on it, so it gives you, gives you a lot better way to see. As far as maintenance goes down there, we had to replace an air dryer on that ladder truck that we just purchased. There was something bad, it wasn't terrible, it was like three hundred and eighty dollars per car.
I will say that we're blessed with mechanics that can do some of this labor themselves. I will say that we're blessed with mechanics that can do some of this labor themselves.
We did it at the house. And we have a full-time fireman that's quit, so we're taking applications for that. And then I've got two volunteers that's trying to get moved over as well. And of course, as you know, they're taking applications for a fire chief, full-time fire chief.
Okay, in the absence of Alderman Goldfrey, and this is where we need to hire Mr. Sam Plum as a volunteer fireman. He's the full-time fireman that resigned from full-time but wants to come on the force as volunteer, so.
Actually, the civil service has already approved and on behalf of the city council, I vote that we concur with the civil service commission. That is my motion.
Second. Motion in second to accept the recommendation of the civil service commission. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor, by show of hands, if unanimous. Thank you, Chief Hayes. And Mr. May is not here tonight. We had, we've had some issues and the garbage trucks are having to go to El Dorado to empty. And one of them got down there and broke down, so he had to go pick up the driver. And this all happened about four thirty-ish, so I didn't expect him to get back in time. But you've got his reports. Other than issues with our garbage trucks and in the shop and everything. We're going to get there. Now then, I move on to the building and codes report. You've got that one in hand. And you've got the properties, the update on the condemned properties, where we are on those. There was three, actually, we've had four that have been cleaned up in the last couple of months.
Oh, it's great, looks wonderful. Even today, there is nothing there.
On Pearson Street, the owner stepped in and started doing their own cleanup. So Mike is, he is monitoring that to make sure that's taking place. You've got the planning commission report. And now then, Mr. Davis, street.
We've just been trying to keep up with the request, work request and cut the grass and getting everything, try to keep everything moving. And that's about all I've got.
Alderman Nuslin, do you have anything to add on?
Well, we've advertised for the bid on the streets in
Thursday.
Thursday, it's twelve, is that right? It's twelve. Open bids on that. That's all I have.
Right there on Main Street with the farmer's market is going to be coming up pretty soon on the sidewalks. So that blue tape is indicated there. Right there with the mark, it's going to be pulled down right there on the sidewalk. Someone put some blue tape over an area of the concrete that's where it's been busted. Maybe we can get some concrete or something to pour off in there as a, you know, as far as a trip hazard for someone. There's two places there where it's got tape on it.
Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you, Mr. Davis. And Mr. Wagnan was not feeling well, so I just told him to go ahead and stay home. You've got his report that was handed out to you. Oh, I'm sorry, I did not mean to. Thank you. Community and economic development committee, Alderman Marshall, do you have your report?
No.
Now then, moving to parks, ways and means, was there anything to report, Alderman Henderson?
Yes, I would just like to share the fact that the ways and means committee did meet on July the twenty-seventh. There was no actions taken. Our agenda consisted of receiving information, additional information on the American Rescue Plan grant. That it is a continuous learning process with dollar amounts. And Tumay was also with us, but there was no action taken. And we will be meeting to work on the upcoming budget as well as continue to look at information as it comes in with the American Rescue Plan. And the mayor did inform us that we did receive our first half of the dollars. And those funds have been put into an account that is entry-bearing. In just reading all of the updates, et cetera, we may get additional funding. Because I have been told that there are cities that don't know if they can really utilize the funds within the restricted categories. Infrastructure is number one, that it can be utilized. One of the questions that we asked during our meeting was if the mayor and Tumay had visited relating any type of large water project that could be utilized for the future of growth for the public city of Moore. But we will give you a detailed report. I look at all of the updates and I don't know if you all received the emails from John Whippleson, the attorney, that I have been giving the updates. But he sent out one and then about fifteen minutes, he sent out another and said that there was a change relating what he had previously said. And that is constant as it relates the funds. But I know that the administration as well as the ways and means and the council will make the right decision. Whether it is infrastructure, if we can find out how we can tie that into roads. We definitely want to do that because it was stated that there may be a way of doing that with our streets. But we are accountable for those dollars. They will be monitored, so we definitely need to make sure that we are doing everything the way that the specs say that we should do. But you'll hear more about it. We do have a handout. The mayor did send us an email relating the actual last update and the website. And again, you might read something today and it is totally different on tomorrow. So as soon as we start to work on it, we will certainly keep you updated. And I highly recommend that you look, go on some of the zones relating it through the Arkansas Municipal League, who are the actual experts. And Alderman Burks had mentioned someone coming in, a consultant. And we are members of Southeast Arkansas Economic Development District. And Mayor, you had made mention that you were attending a meeting, I believe, last Thursday. So I'll just yield and see if you want to add anything to that.
Well, now, the municipal league has been going around to each one of the planning and development districts and giving us an overview to the mayors and county judges that come. But they are also, they did some additional training that morning with the staff at SEAD before we had our meeting that afternoon. And of course, the SEAD staff, well, all the planning and development districts are participating in the Zoom meetings, same Zoom meetings that we are, hearing the same information and learning as we go, so.
But their technical assistance will not cost us anything, I guess, is my, is my point. Because we are a member of that district and they have excellent staff, or they used to have excellent staff, I'm sure they still do. They are to help us, so. That is all that I have unless someone had a question. Committee, other committee members, you all want to add anything? Alderman Frager? I don't know. That is what I want to share. Thank you.
And I will say this, the first thing that they are recommending that we do, and we will do it, is to, there's been a formula developed to see if there's been any revenue loss. And it's that revenue loss, if we can show that there has been some, that is the money that we can then put into the general fund and spend it any way we see fit. And, but we will have to, we've got to do that calculation. And the staff in our treasury are going to get together soon and sit down and start that calculation to see if we can, if we have any.
And we were so blessed here in the city that we actually did not have a huge amount of loss.
Okay, now then, we'll get to the parks and recs commission. You've got Paul's report. And since Alderman Frager is here, I'll let you give a quick report on the pool, if you will.
It's closed. We made it through. We only had the pump, we had one, the, sorry, the rotor went down on the pump. And we had a guy come and fixed it about midway through the summer. And that was the only mechanical issue that we had, so it ran smooth. I was extremely happy.
Okay, you've got the planning commission report. They did have a meeting and then the aviation, we did, they did not meet. And then you've got the water and sewer report. Housing Authority, you've got a report from Mr. Jolly. They had, I believe, lead by phone or Zoom or whatever, they weren't able to clean the person. But they did have a little bit of business to attend to. And then cultural center commission report, Alderman Frager, would you, do you have anything?
Well, we're just waiting on the superintendent coroner to get back with the mayor about what their final decision is. And then as soon as he gets back to her, then we're going to call a cultural center meeting to decide what the next step is.
Is there any unfinished business?
Do you want to give an update about the community meeting that was held over at the cultural center?
I will. We did have our community meeting on the twenty-second of July at the cultural center. The attendance was not as, as what I would have expected or would have liked for it to have been. But the team from ADDI gave their report. And the next step will be if we can get a steering committee together to further look into finding out what our, you know, what committees might be formed and community volunteers to work on things. So right now, my place is kind of full, so it's, I'm still, I still have not had the time to sit down and recap all of that. I know that Alderman Nuslin was there and Alderman Henderson was there. Would you all like to add anything?
I'm pretty well covered. Can we get a copy of that PowerPoint?
Sure, I will email it to you. If I didn't have the final one, I will get it and email it to you.
I was very disappointed in the actual overall assessment and some of the categories as to their findings. For example, our emergency plan, of which I worked on it, we may not have it up to date, but I know that we do have one in place. And there was two or three areas that I felt that although they did the survey, that that information really was not accurate. Because we, we have some things that are going for us that I did not see in the report. Now, I sat in the back, all the way in the back, so that I wouldn't get close, but it was a small number there. But most of the individuals didn't have a mask on and I, you all know how I am, so. But I was hoping that the mayor would have passed on some of those, but she was not, she did not, she just let them give their findings.
It was a, you know, kind of an informational type thing. I had made comments before and to the team. I'm with you, I did not agree with everything that they found in their assessment. But there again, that's why we need to dive into it. And then another thing you have to understand is, I'm not real sure who they reached out to to get some of their information. I know that most of us were interviewed and filled out the surveys. And so I think we just, we'll move forward with that if we can.
Where are we with the committee assignments? They did have, and I did not go up because everyone was using the same microphone and didn't have a mask on. But there was a clipboard that went around for people to sign up. Where are we with what's that?
It's in the office.
Okay, do we have enough on all of the committees or?
Well, it's not, we're not down to forming individual committees. We're right now is me trying to reach back out to these people and find out who's really interested in being on what we call a steering committee. That would then go forward with trying to form the individual committees. But it's, all the information is in my office. It's white and orange.
Yeah, I think there was about seventeen people there, but it was interesting conversation. I mean, it was an eye-opener for me, to be honest with you, it really was.
Okay, any public statements? Any new business? A couple of announcements that market on Main Street. We will be having that again on this Saturday, August the fourteenth. Last time we had seventeen vendors, this time they have got twenty-one vendors that are already committed to come. And everybody felt like they were successful enough to want to come back. So we will continue to do that as we can. And I noticed that the committee was meeting over in the chamber office this afternoon at five to get all the final details in place. But everything really went, I would have to say, without very many, I mean, there really were no hiccups. I mean, it just, it just was, everybody cooperated and several sold out. So I would, you know, ask you to come and see what it's all about. We do have one produce company coming, so there will be some produce unless something happens, they don't, you never know about last minute things. Remember that school starts on August the sixteenth and I would ask you to pray for our teachers, pray for our kids. And let's just pray for a good school year and that this virus will move on so that the kids can enjoy school as they know it. I need a motion to pay the bills for July.
Before we get the motion? I'm just noticing, is there a way that we can, I know that this is a particular program, but it's also, it can be put like on a spreadsheet, clear, everything is all on one sheet where we don't have to like, go to the front, go to the back to find the actual dollars. The first sheet just gives the fund, the transaction, transaction number, name and interest. Then you have to go all the way over to the total bank invoice with the dollar amount.
I will, I run those reports.
I know you can, you can.
I'm not familiar enough with that system to know what, I mean, we can reach out to our representative Scott and ask him if Ms. Helen's understanding exactly how you want to see it.
She's not understanding?
Yes, she is.
Oh, she is understanding. Well, I took my stapler out and spread it down and was able to see what I wanted to see. But it would be easier if it was all on one page.
Okay, we'll we'll check into that. And also, uh the shooting range of construction has started, so if you want to run a drive-by out there and see the progress and.
I move that we pay the bills for the month of July.
Second, motion in second to pay July uh July's bills, any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands, unanimous. Uh set the next meeting, will be agenda meeting on the ninth at seven a.m. and then the second Monday is the thirteenth at five-thirty. You need a motion?
I move that we ignore.
Okay. All those in favor, you all can.